Two little girls with him.
Right there.
The October 11, 2021 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment will come to order. Chair recognizes Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful to gather as this Planning Board, Adjustment Board meeting this evening. We're grateful for the opportunity to serve this community, and we're grateful for the trust that this community has in this board. And we pray that as we consider the items this evening, that that trust might be well-founded, that we might execute our responsibilities and our duties according to the laws and the Constitution, but also in terms of supporting and serving the county, members of our communities. We pray for thy Spirit to be with us and help us to make the good choices and the right choices that will help improve and better Rockingham County. In this we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior, amen.
The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Ms. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the agenda is adopted unanimously. At this time, Chair recognizes our county attorney, Mr. John Morris, who will administer the oath of office to all present.
I think it's all.
You guys might have to shave.
We can do that.
We can do that.
If you could share with him, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Top half, bottom half, I'm good.
Okay, let us proceed with the oath. Those that are taking the oath tonight, if you would place your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me, "Aye," and then repeat your name.
Aye.
Corey Scott.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Rockingham County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment.
As a member of the Rockingham County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment.
And that I will not allow my actions.
And I will not allow my actions.
As a member of these boards.
As a member of these boards.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships.
Or obligations.
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Mr. Morris.
Welcome.
Have you all executed your sheet?
Oh, I have not. May I borrow a pen?
Hold on, Corey, you've got one more. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for July, August, and September. We don't have Julies, but we do have August and September. Since they're rather lengthy, Chair moves that we accept the minutes, and please take them home with you and look them over, and we'll vote on them at our next meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table temporarily the approving of the minutes until the next regularly scheduled meeting. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the motion carries. The next item on the agenda are the text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance. And I'm going to ask Mr. Marziano to outline these changes for us, amendments, rather. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. We have three possible text amendments before y'all today. The first one is Article 4, Division 3, Section 63.01. This is involving shooting range facilities. We were asked by administration to look into this a little bit, and I wanted to look into it as well. Our shooting range ordinances currently only really suggest outdoor facilities, and we do know there would probably be interest in indoor in the future. And the definition does leave room for indoor, but we just had no regulations regarding it, and I feel that was a big, kind of a gap, so to speak, especially with the impact that something like that may have, you know, with the way our regulations are currently. As long as an engineer certified it, they could have an indoor facility next, pretty much next door to anything else. So by adding this to, as an indoor facility as language, and then adding it to the table, sorry, flipped the wrong page, Table 63.01, which is our high-impact table, and put it under a Class II, we feel that it would add the necessary safety and noise buffer and all that that would, you know, protect the neighboring property interests where this would be allowed. It'd still only be allowed technically in the same locations that any outdoor facility would be, but that still leaves itself open to a lot of areas and interpretation. And the major difference here is Class II facility is a 500-foot setback from a house or a protected unit, house, church, things like that, schools, whereas a regular shooting range is 1,000 foot, outdoor facility is 1,000. So we feel with the safety measures that would engineer would put in place on the indoor facility with the walls and structure, that would help lower that impact down a little Any questions?
Not yet. Members, I'm going to suggest that we vote on these individually as Mr. Marziano reads them. Are there any questions regarding the text amendment to this particular section?
I've got a couple of questions. Remind me of the, they're not listed here, the building requirements, like the wall, like, is there increased?
Reinforcement?
Right.
Yes, there's an NRA guide for things like this, but all of it has to be engineered, developed, and designed. So those, I don't know what the specifications are, but we recommend utilizing the NRA as guidelines. But again, everything has to be certified by an engineer to make sure that penetration wouldn't happen, you know, through the walls.
So it seems like to me, or as I remember, when we've had requests come to us for, to put in a shooting range, we've always referenced the NRA guidelines. And I'm wondering if that's something that we might want to include here, just so that there can be some type of governing body, not so much governing bodies, but there's some standards that are reached. And I have no problem with NRA guidelines. They seem to be, they seem to be pretty well thought out, and at least there's some expertise involved in that. So I wonder if it would behoove us to just include that language.
The way, and I might be mistaken on this, but I think the way the ordinance reads under this section that regulates the outdoor facilities, does it say it's recommended or that they will use? Do you remember, Lynn, you got the ordinance in front of you?
I'm actually checking that. This is, and I would be totally confused too if I didn't have my ordinance in front of me. The section we're looking at today is an amendment to the impacts section to allow the special use permit requirements for the assurting range are not changing at all, and they do reference NRA standards shall be consulted during engineering.
But if it doesn't use the word shall, we can add that to this amendment tonight. That wouldn't be an issue.
Yeah, so, and that's, it seems like to me that when we've heard these cases before, the language is not shall. It's, I think that's been one of the things that we've ended up including in some of it. And of course, the applicants, we have yet to see an applicant that that was burdensome for. They all, the ones that I've heard, they've all gotten that, they've been using those guidelines and standards to begin with, but I think it might be a good idea to put shall in there so that we make sure that they're high-quality. I mean, I don't want just anybody building a gun range.
It'd be starting on page 225, Lynn.
I don't think that they could get insurance coverage if they did not use.
Okay.
I think that would be hard to.
This text amendment is really to add indoor ranges to the impact tables.
Okay.
The rest of the UDO, with regards to the NRA and all that, does not change. This is just for the update, these two tables.
So this wouldn't, that's, that piece would be a little bit irrelevant, or?
Hard to table.
It would supersede it, okay.
But it's something either we can revisit if we need to, it's nothing we can't always add to the special uses. And the way I interpreted it is pretty much if the engineer's not using that as the guidelines, then they're not meeting the intent of the ordinance anyway, because I would still interpret that to be, if not the NRA, some other comparable bodies' design guidelines. It still has to meet some kind of standard for the engineer to be able to design and approve it.
And I'm sorry, I bring it up here because this is the first, this is kind of the first time I've, we've sort of seen this, so just wanted to make sure we're having high standards.
Julie, if you want, I have the actual special use permit language, and I can, you want me to, I can read it really quickly. It's the very first part, Design and Construction. This is in the special use permit itself. Plan specification and construction of the range shall consist of a professional evaluation, guidance, and services of a professional engineer, architects experienced in range planning and design. The most recent edition of the NRA Range Source Book, A Guide to Planning and Construction, may provide technical assistance. So if we think we need to make that a shall, we can look at that. I don't, how, do you feel strongly about that, the shall versus the may in that?
That engineer stamp of approval, though, they're going to have to go by.
Something.
They've got to go by the code for that.
Shall's in the first sentence, but I, so I'm kind of, I'm okay if we don't put it in there, but I would love to see a little bit more emphasis, you know. Yep. But that, you're right, you're right, Paul, this is not part of this.
We can add that to the list.
That would have to, changing that one word, believe it or not, is going to require approval of the commissioners and the subcommittee, because again, all we're dealing with is in addition to the table here. We're not changing the language for the special use permit.
Is it necessary to change that one word? Because as Marzy said, it's going to go through the engineer anyway, and he's going to use the same standards that the NRA has anyway, so it seems kind of a mute point to me.
Well, again, as I said, it would, to change any word at all in the UDO has to first go through the scrutiny of the subcommittee and then get final approval from the commissioners.
And if I can interject on that, as another point on that, if we did update the language, I would actually recommend that we do the NRA or comparable body of regulation, something like that. There can be multiple standards that can apply to multiple regions, so. But we would still, it's still not a problem for us to put that on our list to look at and make sure that the intent is clear.
Okay. As far as the changing of the table, though, there has been a motion made and seconded that we accept this change, text amendment change to update the table in this section. So all those in favor?
Wait, did we?
I'm sorry.
Did we do that?
I didn't get one.
No, that was the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have one question, Mr. Chair.
Then we'll entertain a motion.
I have a question, please, just one. And this is just curiosity. Do you have any idea how many indoor and outdoor shooting ranges there are in Rockingham County? Just a.
I know of two, well, I know of one specific outdoor range, another one coming up for wildlife in the state. I'm not aware of any indoor ranges. I'm aware of a few, like in Raleigh, but not here yet, but it's on the rise from what I understand, so.
Around the counties, there's a few around, but at my knowledge, there's not one in Rockingham.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Motion.
Ms. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the language as amended.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the language updating the table in this particular section of the UDO. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Since there's no opposition, the text amendment is approved unanimously. Marzy, you can give us the next text amendment.
Yes, sir. This one is Article 3, Division 7, Section 73.01. What we're requesting to do is revise the zoning violation enforcement procedures. This is a request from our code enforcement officers to bring this in line with the other rules and ordinances that they enforce for the county, so that their process, their paperwork, everything is the same from ordinance to ordinance to ordinance. Ours was being treated differently, so they'd take additional procedures and steps, and it was clogging up the system, basically. So this would hopefully, these changes would hopefully streamline their process. It matches, I think it pretty much matches the solid waste ordinance that they administer as well. So it's lengthy, but it's basically just cut and paste in their stuff over into our language.
Some of you, I think, have been on the board for folks who have been here for appeals and have seen, you know, these packets of evidence, Exhibit A, B, C, D, E, which often have lengthy information about notices of violations, citations. That was the former ordinance. The new ordinance had language that really wasn't quite clear on timing, on the duration of notices and that kind of thing. And in addition to what Marzy said, this is sort of what resulted, so that it can parallel the solid waste ordinance. It makes their job easier, and at the same time, to my understanding and Marzy's understanding, it works really well, as far as this system of notices, violation, and citation. Does that make sense?
Pretty much standardized.
Any questions regarding this text amendment? Mr. Chairman, I recommend a motion to approve these minutes or these changes in this document as outlined.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the text amendment for the section regarding enforcement procedures for code violations. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Again, no opposition, so the motion or text amendment changes are adopted unanimously. With that, the next one.
Article 4, Division 2, Table 41.05-1. This is on page 99 of your ordinance. This is the dimensional standards table. There seems to be, I think I understand what the intent may have been originally in the residential density part, but it doesn't work the way it was intended, if you follow most other communities. There were no figures put in for RA and RP with, when the property had public water and sewer, which theoretically meant they could be infinite density. It should, if you didn't want any density, it would have been zero or one unit per acre or something like that. If you want, if you leave nothing in the blank, then it's, there's no regulation. So we felt that was a big gap, but we also felt it was a good time to fix a few things. I think the intent with the change in ordinance was to allow RP to also do major subdivisions, not just RM. So we added that little bit down at the bottom. We also included RP to do to five units per acre, to be less dense than our max dense at residential mixed, but still somewhat dense to make use of those larger tracts that are still residential-protected. And that number can fluctuate if y'all want to change that around. It's just, we felt it was a good, a good fit for the ones we were seeing. And we also just copied the number from public water for RA above and left it at 1.7. If it's got public water and it's got sewer, it can stay at 1.7, is the way we felt about it. It still wouldn't be a major subdivision at that point. No one's going to be slicing something up to be considered a major subdivision, but it still left room for, you know, some consideration as opposed to just infinite, so.
At the, at the last TRC meeting, our county engineer for utilities, Ronnie Tate, brought up the possibility, if you look at the table, it says, "Without public water or sewer, with public water, with public water and sewer." Didn't he want to add the category "with public sewer"?
I think.
Meaning, it would have public sewer, but not public water.
Yeah, you're right, and I forgot about that when we were doing this table. The simple change of that is where it says, "With public water," what I was originally thinking about doing when we were doing this table would be "or sewer," so either/or, and just keep those same densities, you know, for the sewer versus.
Right, well, it wasn't the density that was going to change, but he just wanted that one distinct classification added.
Yeah.
But if you want to put in the word "or."
We could do that in the second column where it says, "Just with public water currently." Or the second row, we can just say, after that, put in "or public sewer," and just make that as a change tonight, too, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. They need, we need to say in that second line, "one or the other."
Yeah, and I had that as a note, and I forgot. Thanks for reminding me, I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions regarding this text amendment change request? Then I would please ask the person making the motion to say that you're recommending or moving that we accept the text amendment as amended, because we've added two words, "or sewer," to the second line in the table.
Mr. Chair, you go ahead.
Yes.
I make the motion that we approve this as presented with amendment.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt the text amendment as amended for dimensional standards. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the text amendment is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marzy.
If I may, real quick, ask, do the blurbs at the top of these text amendments help?
Absolutely.
All right, good. I'm trying to find ways to help streamline y'all's information, so, but as always, you got questions, call me during the week, call me at night, I don't care, just, I'll respond no matter what, so, thanks very much.
You're welcome, sir, thank you. Moving on to new business, a final text amendment for the day concerns the bylaws for the County Planning Board and Board of Adjustment at the request of the County Commissioners and resulting from significant input from citizens who responded to the publication of the Unified Development Ordinance. The commissioners are requiring that a minimum of four board members shall have a residency period of at least five years in the county.
Before we make a motion.
Oh, and before we make the motion, and I recognize you, Julie, this text amendment is going forward. It doesn't include any restriction on the composition of the current board.
Just some background, what prompted this? What?
Significant input from the public. Some very prominent county citizens came forward and suggested some changes to the Unified Development Ordinance, and at first glance, what they wanted was for every board member to have been a member of this county for five years and own property. The commissioners felt that was just a little too restrictive, so they did compromise by agreeing that four board members would have a residency period of at least five years.
And remind me, we have up to how many members on this board?
Seven.
Okay. So a majority of us would be, would have lived here for at least five years?
Mr. Chair, during that same commissioners meeting, I may remind you, too, that there was a lot of public input about, not only that part of the board makeup, but also there was significant input about folks who wanted to have different occupations represented. Most particularly was the AG part of it. So there was a lot of pushback, so there may be some other changes coming, I'm guessing, possibly, but.
The subcommittee at this particular time is still reviewing the ag district and composition of an ag board and all that. It's a long way from being finalized. A lot of discussion going on. It's being considered very carefully, but it is in the works.
Julie, I would clarify, too, and for Paul, because I had to think about this, too, for a second, that the four being out of, let's say there are seven of you all, and we get new alternates on, and there are nine, I believe, my understanding, is four from that entire group. I don't know, is that your understanding, Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Not necessarily sitting.
The board includes regular members and alternates.
Right, the full board, okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the new provision in the bylaws stating that a minimum of four board members shall have residence, a residency period of at least five years in the county.
Second.
Four years, is it?
I said four years. Oh, I'm sorry, four years.
Right, no.
Five years.
Four members, five years.
Five years.
Numbers are not my friend.
We know what you mean.
And it's right there, how it's written.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to change the bylaws to include a residency requirement of five years for at least four members of this board. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There being no opposition, the motion is adopted, and the bylaws will be changed. Our, our approval of the text amendments, this one included, like zoning request, serves as a recommendation to the commissioners, does it?
Yes.
Any old business before the board? It doesn't appear as though there's any. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. The motion carries unanimously.